All right, I see it as 6:02 as we're reminiscing about all our fun weekend activities. We're going to go ahead and get started. Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started with the work session for this evening. Roll call.
Benson?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Hunoff?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Minor? Schramm? Villanueva?
Present.
Weber? Mayor Mosher?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
All right, number two under the work session is a chance for the public to appear in front of the commission on something not on the work session agenda tonight. Seeing no movement, then we will move on to the reason we're all here a little bit early tonight for our work session. And tonight, we're going to be talking about the city of Yankton business licenses. I don't know, Amy, anything you want to share or start us off or just turn it over to Lisa?
I'll just say that one of the things Lisa and I visited about is walking through these licenses with you, rates and type and structure, and to get some feedback from you on whether or not we want to continue administering some of these, as well as if we are charging appropriately. Some are governed by local ordinance and would require an ordinance change if you make any changes. Some may not be relevant anymore. You may find some thing that's not listed here that you would like to license. So she and I would like to visit with you about that so we can get some direction and come up with a work plan then on what we need to do to update these. And then perhaps every few years, you know, three to five years, revisit licenses, go through them. They haven't been done in a long time, at least since I have been here. So it's time definitely for us to do some work on it. And that work might take us through the year to get everything done. But looking for feedback tonight, and we'll have, I think, at the end of Lisa's slide presentation, some of our major area of concerns that we have, so sort of some recommendations for you guys to talk about. I'd like to say I put together this Excel sheet and the PowerPoint, but I did not.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Commission, Mayor Mosher, City Manager Leon, City Attorney Denherter. Thank you for having me. I'm excited to start this process because when I joined the city, there was a lot of, we have a lot of licenses. So let's take a look at what finances with the business side of things. So we're going to go into today, we're going to talk, break up a little bit of the licenses in general. We're going to split them up versus alcohol, non-alcohol related, commissioner approval, non-commissioner approval required. So then we're also going to take a look at the money factor because that's what I like to look at is what is our cost for providing these licenses? What's, what is our break even? Kind of an idea of looking at the stats side of things. Then we're going to take a step forward and say, this is what we need to consider as we move forward, and these are areas of concern. So let's jump into it. First, we're going to start with the alcohol licenses. We don't have a lot of leeway over the alcohol license side. We follow South Dakota Codified Law, Chapter 35. So if you look at our city ordinances, there's not a lot of information. You know, it says we follow state law. So there is a little bit difference with the special event alcoholic beverages. So there is a really good reference on our city website. If you go on our licenses, we do have a little webpage on alcohol licenses. We also do have a refresher on our special events alcohol license. So as we look into the process of that, we are required to receive a state, South Dakota state form. It's called the Uniform Alcoholic Beverage License Application. It's a two-page form. It's, it's what the state requires. So anything alcohol-related, with the exception of special events, we send that form to the state after city commission approval. So if we look at staff time, the staff time is a little bit higher because those licenses require an inspection by police, you know, background check, we get birth dates for that, community development, our building inspector makes sure they're up to code, and then our fire inspection. So that makes sure there's no questions or issues there with them. So there is a little bit more time that these licenses take. Also, another thing is we are required to do our public of hearing notices. That's in the PND, the Yankton Press, and Dakota is our designated newspaper. We don't have a choice. We have to publish in that. So we see fees anywhere from $15 up to $30. It really, they get, they charge us by the character. So those fees aren't going down anytime soon. Then also postage. Postage is not going down either. So you can kind of see the money we do get in. Those fees are pretty standard across the board. That's $300 for a malt beverage. The other alcohol licenses, that is the maximum allowable per state law. So with the exception of special events, special events, we only get $5 a day for special event. We'll talk about that later. You can also see the number issued in 2023. So the malt beverage, so anything is unlimited with the exception of liquor. So that's going to be the package and retail liquor, to be exact. So the packaged liquor is population-based. This past census, we did reach that 15,000 population threshold. We were allowed for a 12th package liquor license, which we're going to talk about here at the next meeting. So that next license, I don't think is available till we reach a population of 16,500. Retail liquor, that's, that is the big one. I tell people liquor is king. So we have 17 liquor, on-sale liquor holders, and the next one is not available until 22,001 people is registered with the U.S. Census Bureau, which just happens every 10 years. So that's probably not going to happen anytime soon, but those licenses are something we see annually. You see them usually at the end of fall to approve. At this time, does anybody have any questions on alcohol licenses?
For those special events licenses, have we seen a trend line for those? Are they going up? It just feels like we do, so many of them, but that might be something that's been occurring for longer.
We have, yes. So it looks like, of course, of course, there was COVID, but pre-COVID, we were doing about 59 we did in 2019. We went up to like 65 in 2021. So I will say 44% of those licenses issued in 2023 were from one entity. So 26 out of 59, we have reached out that, reached out to that entity to see, hey, maybe annual malt beverage license would be more effective for your business. So, so that's something that we have looked at. So it, it kind of, it really depends. It's hit or miss on the special events. So moving forward, we next go to the commission-approved licenses that do not require alcohol. So you've probably recognized these in commission action. We got our dance halls. We got the differentiation between type A and a type B dance hall license. We have our special events dance, which you look at our code of ordinances, that really ties into the same thing as the dance hall. It's not really a specific differentiation. The mobile home park is done every fall as well with the help of community development. Pond broker, we haven't had one in a couple of years, so right now that's zero. And then the collector, private collector of refuse is the commercial garbage collectors around town that are, they're allowed to offer services and also drive on our city streets. And then the last is the transient merchant. So as you can see with the staff hours, that one really is a hit or miss because some of them do require an inspection by the building inspector. The, I know the fire chief likes to take a look at the dance hall portion to kind of make sure that matches. So you can kind of see right there, to give a good example, estimated staff hours, on average, and for simplicity, we're spending about $30 an hour for staff time, you know, and that includes a little bit of wages plus benefits. When you include the fire department, include our building inspector, include some of our police officers, that goes up. So, you know, but for tonight's, for tonight's meeting, I think the $30 is a really good example of, you know, pond brokers. We're going to spend two hours estimated on time, that's $60. We're losing $10 to issue that license. So that's kind of a reason behind the madness there. Dance halls are pretty common throughout the year. If it's a private dance, we do not collect. It's only if it's a dance open to the public, they're trying to collect fees. Same thing with like the transient merchant, you know, that's something where that's kind of a hit or miss. Transient merchant, there is exceptions for people who sell produce, people who are selling like flowers, stuff that they are growing themselves. There's also exceptions to charitable organizations. So you might, you might see a little exceptions if you look at our city code with some licenses like that. I'd also like to point out, in the past, the city commission has seen peddler's licenses. So per our city code, the city manager approves that, and based on denial, it then goes before a city commission. However, in the past, that is something that the city commission has brought a concern. We want to know who the peddlers are. That, those are people going door to door, whereas a transient merchant is a person sitting at a pop-up tent along the side of the road. So that's something where I like to say, as a commission, think about, what do you want us, what do you want to approve, what do you not? That's something that would help guide us a little bit as we review these licenses.
So is it okay if I ask questions as we go along? I can't remember if we addressed that.
Sure.
Okay. With the dance, with the special events dance licenses, is that something that we're required by the state to do, or is that a city?
It's not a requirement. If you actually look at what other cities do, it's very, it's kind of an odd thing to charge for. It's only a $5 license. You know, I feel like we spend more time trying to enforce it and collect for it than what we get out of it. So per state law, we're allowed to collect for special events dance licenses, but we're not required to.
I have a question about that too, Lisa. So I would presume that if these, these places are selling alcohol, dance halls, they are inspected by either community development or the fire department.
That's correct.
So we know that life safety kind of issues are taken care of. So is this, this kind of like reckons back to Footloose? Like why are, why is that, I mean, what are we doing? It's like, if it's okay to dance, if you want to?
You cannot dance unless you pay us $5.
I mean, I'm just want, like historically, too, that's another issue. I'm not even sure Al would have had the history on why do we, why are we doing this?
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, I understand why if a business had, that's part of their business model is they have dancers or whatever. But for the special events, I'm just not so sure that has a place anymore.
No, if there is a, what we call an SOB, and it's not the kind of SOB you guys are think, might thinking of, but a sexually orientated business, so like a, a strip club or a, you know, the kind of a, that kind of a dance, there, we know about that already because they have to be zoned, they have to be placed in a specific zoning district.
That's a type A dance hall.
Type A versus type B. I just call it what it's, I learned calling them SOB. So, so, so we know that already, so, because I can understand, understanding wanting to know where those are in the community and understanding that. But whether or not somebody dances or not in the street, I'm just...
That's a great question. I think a lot of the licenses originated from, are these vendors collecting South Dakota sales tax? Are they paying sales tax to the, to the state? So I think a lot of that has been in the historical aspect of things where I think we'll talk about later as we get towards the areas of concern. But you're right, there has been a lot of licenses where, oh, this is interesting. I, it does raise a lot of questions for sure. And that's why I'm really excited we're talking about this tonight, because I feel like this is just putting us in the right step forward. Does anybody else have any other questions about the commission-approved licenses? Okay, let's move on. We're going to go to the, to the big one. These are all other licenses that finance is involved with, so...
Lisa, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So I do have a question about the peddler's license. Who, do we do any type of background check on peddlers, et cetera?
We do. We require that, yes. Yes. That is something where we do ask for them also to, I believe, a bond is what they're also required to have. And in the past, we've been also collecting a photo ID.
Perfect.
For that kind of ask. So that is a public concern we have been brought.
Since right now, that's something Commissioner Villanueva, that you have given the city manager authority to do. I also, they typically kind of go throughout the area or the region, so I'll reach out to other cities and say, hey, have you had these folks here? Have they caused any problems?
Right. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're going to start by breaking out these licenses, kind of in different categories. If, from the PowerPoint, if you have the slide, also on our city website, if you look at the presentation, each one of these tabs is actually connected to the city code. So that's something where if you want to say, hey, what's the definition of restaurant? You know, you can kind of pinpoint right to where our, our code is, is listed there. So we're going to start out with amusements. So in today's world, what's the definition of amusement? These raise a lot of questions. These raise a lot of, do we have the staff to enforce this? So that's something where a lot of these are our everyday businesses trying to make a living. You know, they're usually businesses that we know about, that have been here a while. And you can kind of tell from the staff time. It doesn't take a ton of staff time, but on our end, it does take a little bit of, should they get a license, should they not? So it does raise a lot of questions with that. And, you know, we've also had people talk about in the past, we didn't know we needed this license. So that's something too, where it's kind of hard to inform the public when, you know, there is a lot of little, little bit. The mechanical writing device says, or games of chance or skill. So I, you know, talking with Ross, I'm like, okay, well, what does that mean? You know, so like a claw machine requires a license? And he's like, yeah. You know, so that's something where on, on our end, it is difficult to kind of, you can kind of see we, we don't go around business to business because we don't have the staff.
There's also a statute that is in place that entities that are doing raffles or games of chance should be notifying.
Yes.
The city. And somehow, you know, getting approval. So occasionally, I'll get a panicked call from somebody doing a raffle saying, we didn't get, you know, approval, but it's, that's almost impossible to, especially in Yankton, you know, with so many fundraisers and things happening. But that is a statute, so that's not a license, but it seems like we're doubling up there on some things, too.
Correct. And raffle permits are common looking at other cities. You know, the term raffle permit is, I have seen.
Yeah. The state kind of indicates that people should be notifying the city, get approval from the city. So when they send me a letter, you know, it's typically it's a service club, I send the letter back and say, yep, that's great, thanks for letting me know. There is no possible way to track all those.
Yes, yep.
But I guess, you know, so to me, that would be, I wouldn't recommend a permit for that or a license for that because...
Yes.
That's all we'd be doing.
Yes. It, it does take, you know, I laugh about the, I think it's the pool tables. You can't play pool after 1:00 a.m., but bars are open till 2:00 a.m. So you can't, don't play pool from 1:00 to 2:00 a.m. So it's...
Dave has been in violation.
But just, it's little things like that.
Lisa, going back to that previous slide, setting aside the video lottery licenses, have you denied any of, any licenses for these other uses?
No.
And if so, what would you have denied them for?
That's a great question.
Okay.
Perhaps if they did not have a South Dakota sales tax license, that would be probably a big factor. You know, so...
So I think a lot of these were established pre-internet when, you know, you didn't know, you couldn't go online to see if the motorcycle rally was paying sales tax or the vendor at the Sturgis was paying sales tax. But now you can do that. So I feel like that takes away some of that concern.
Yeah, I really question why we bother licensing any of these. Unless there's some sort of public safety element that we're...
Well, I was thinking that too, but then you look at like a billiard hall and a bowling alley, they're usually tied to alcohol, so they're probably being inspected and looked at and considered under their alcohol license, I would imagine. None of these are probably going to be independent or even be successful if it's not tied to probably an establishment that serves alcohol, but good point.
Because even with the circus, it's not like we have staff going in there to make sure their equipment is safe and stuff like that, right? Yeah.
No. No. So moving on to food. So that's something I, I like to talk about is, food is probably one of our bigger enforcers where we have three types of food, we have an inter, itinerant restaurant, excuse me there. That's if a brick and mortar place came to town for less than 90 days and wanted to open up a, a food place during the summer. So they would therefore need to give us a license. A restaurant license is anybody serving food to the public. We do require a sales tax license. We also require their Department of Health license. So, and they also have to give us written permission. Well, that's the street vendor, excuse me, the street vendor of food, they have to meet those requirements, plus give us written permission to be on property. So that's something we do see a lot of. I will tell you right now that some, like Vermillion makes $15 in a day for their food truck license. So that's something where I definitely think for the time we're spending, I mean, we're spending $30 in staff hours and we're getting $15 for the whole year. So that's a concern on my end. Does anybody have any other questions about the food aspect?
I'll just say, this is one area where it does make sense to me to have licensing.
Correct. And that's one thing, last summer before Riverboat Days, we did send these lists to the state of South Dakota saying, hey, these people are in, register their license in the city to serve food. And that really was a great relationship and it was, it was very productive. Another one is we're going to look at the trade retail. These are people selling stuff, trying to do business. So, you know, we got our junk dealers, our kennel, we just revised a couple of years ago, so that's something that's pretty updated. Of course, our medical cannabis dispensaries are pretty updated, so that just came out in 2021. Those are capped to two licenses for dispensaries. We are not allowed to have any cultivation, any manufacturing, and no testing facility. So that is something we do get questions from, and we do not offer those, those extra license types. And then here, we also have our peddlers and solicitors. So this is kind of where the peddlers are going door to door. There is an exemption if it's for somebody who is for a nonprofit. So you might see Boy Scouts going door to door selling wreaths. They're exempt from getting this kind of license. So we don't sell a whole lot of them because we are pretty strict on the door-to-door people. We require a lot of stuff from them. Is there any questions on these licenses? Next, we're going to go into trade. These are people doing the physical labor. So you can kind of see that generically, most people do the contractor side of things. It'd be nice to just have one electrician, one plumbing license that would help us out. Some other cities, they do these licenses more in depth. Like I've seen some do a pipe installer, a pipe layer. You know, there's some cities that get really technical with these kind of licenses. So it's really up to you. We have made contact with the state of South Dakota, and later this spring, they are going to be working on getting all of their licensed electricians, plumbers, such as these, actually on their state website. So that's something I'm looking really forward to with, hey, we have this resource now from the state, we're able to look up. So, you know, it might be a simple of, hey, they have to license in our city, but you have to submit your sales tax license and your, your light, your state license number, and we can look them up. So there's a lot of possibilities here. It depends how, how much you want to enforce this. Sometimes I do see people doing work and I'm like, they don't have a license. So what do you do there?
So Lisa, in the cities where they get more in-depth with this, do you, are you aware of what philosophy they're approaching it from?
I'm not quite sure. Watertown is a big one, that they do have a lot of more in-depth. They're obviously a bigger population, they have a little bit more entities going on, so I can definitely reach out and get back to you on that one.
I had that exact question that I was debating with Lisa in her office last week. And philosophically, I think it makes sense to have the trade licensure, but only to, to do two things. One, confirm that they are in fact licensed with the state before they do business, and then make it a criminal penalty and injunctive relief so you can stop them very quickly and effectively from continuing to do business in this community if they're not properly licensed. Because I think it's like, it, it takes a pretty Herculean effort to get the state to immediately and promptly take care of those problems if we're not doing it at the local level. But that's administratively, if that's our philosophy, we could probably streamline some of this, you know, show us your proof that you're licensed and we can take action if you're not.
I think we do want to understand that because there's a lot more professions there that we could license if we wanted. I mean, so where, you know, what, what, the commission's philosophy and where that stops and starts is important for us. So I think there's some states where, you know, a lot of different types of services, for example, have to be licensed, not just with the state, but with the city. And that hasn't, I'm just curious in history as to why, you know, electric and plumbing. I understand, for example, the refuse collectors because we have our own service and we want to know who's on our streets, but it'd be interesting to have some historical perspective.
Yeah, I agree. And I think too, like I was looking at this, and I have friends that are general contractors, so they probably wouldn't like it, but I was just curious again, yeah, why are electricians and plumbers, but general contractors are not on here? I'm not saying they should be or shouldn't be. I just, it's just kind of interesting how did those kind of two professions get selected, but not others? So yeah, that was a question I had.
All right. So moving on to transportation. So we have our vehicle for hires, our TNCs, our tax...
You know, show us your proof that you're licensed and we can take action if you're not.
I think we do want to understand that because there's a lot more professions there that we could license if we wanted. I mean, so where, you know, what, what the commission's philosophy and where that stops and starts is important for us. So I think there's some states where, you know, a lot of different types of services, for example, have to be licensed, not just with the state, but with the city. And that hasn't, I'm just curious in history as to why, you know, electric and plumbing. I understand, for example, the refuse collectors because we have our own service and we want to know who's on our streets. But it'd be interesting to have some historical perspective.
Yeah, I agree. And I think too, like I was looking at this and I have friends that are general contractors, so they probably wouldn't like it. But I was just curious again, yeah, why are electricians and plumbers, but general contractors are not on here? I'm not saying they should be or shouldn't be. I just, it's just kind of interesting how did those kind of two professions get selected, but not others. So yeah, that was a question I had.
All right, so moving on to transportation. So we have our vehicle for hires, our TNCs, our taxis, and then we have our horse drawn carriages. So we haven't done a horse drawn carriage in a couple of years. But you can see we spend an hour of staff time and we only get 25 bucks. So it's again, it's one of those where, you know, is it worth having? Maybe it's better to evolve with our animal ordinance and allow with approval. Cause I think again, that license originated where does this, are they compliant with sales tax through the state? And are we going to make sure they're also cleaning up after themselves with some of the animal stuff? But there is an exemption for parades, which I'm sure we see. So it's a, it's a question.
Yeah, and that one I think came from, we grappled with because it came from, we recently completed our update of our animal ordinance and we had an individual who wanted to do this sort of in the evenings, maybe during the holidays or something. And they wanted to kind of park out, park their horse drawn carriage outside of a bar and give little brides. And, you know, we talked to the PD and there was some concern about, you know, all those things you mentioned. But now that came and went, so I like wrapping that one up into the animal ordinance by letting, if the commission's comfortable with that, staff authorize that for a period of time with the understanding that they have sales tax and they're cleaning up and we know who they are and they hold us harmless or what have you.
Then we're going to go into what other departments do, and I may have missed a few, so I'm sorry if I didn't include everything. The police department, they do get a lot of questions about animal licensing. So here's my Bob Barker, announce it, please get your pet spayed and neutered and licensed. So that's something that Chief Foot and his staff handles with. They also handle with golf cart permits, community development. They do a lot on the building zoning side. They handle some stuff with the daycare. They see a lot, you probably have seen a lot on the commission action side with the sidewalk cafes. You just did one recently. And then they do several, several more permits as well. And then of course parks, they have a lot of their rentals, parades, they do the street closures. They also handle a lot of the fireworks stuff. So I'm sure I missed some. I know fire has also, they might have some permits I may have missed. But we're not going to go into too much detail on that. Maybe that's a later discussion. If anybody has questions, please feel free to reach out and we can give you answers on those. Now that we've kind of looked at what we have, let's see why, you know, what should we consider? You know, we, we got to look at connection. How are we communicating our story? How are we informing the public? We have gotten some licensees and like, we didn't know we had to get this. And, you know, I think that goes a long ways. I think we're in a different time with social media, you know, with our website. So there's a lot of steps I'd like to kind of bridge that gap and make sure people are more informed and aware of what our licenses are. The second is the law. Of course, state law is always changing, so it's important to kind of keep up to date with that. Make sure we're following state law and of course federal law. The cost, so that's something where we've kind of talked a little bit about, you know, our cost as a staff, as a city enforcing it. You know, I've seen some other cities, they charge a publication fee on top of that. So there's a lot of options. You know, I'm not out to try to get a lot of money, grow the, a new branch of a tree, as Al would say. I'm just trying to get us a little bit more break even, really. So that's something that I think is important to address. Another thing too is our mission, you know, is it aligning with our city mission? Is it, you know, does it meet with our strategic plan? Is it, are our licenses helping people grow and thrive? Or are they kind of just adding more work and kind of preventing that? So, so that's the one thing I think is important. And of course, the economy, you know, I think everybody's aware that costs are rising. You know, people may be changing their lifestyle, their habits. As a city organization, I think it's important to review our licenses with these factors in mind. Excuse me. So now that we've kind of looked at all that, the, I want to point out my major area of concern and that's special events. I think in 2023, we probably lost over $5,000 just by handling special events. That's probably more than that, more like $5,349 to be exact. But you can kind of see a comparison with other cities, you know, Mitchell, they'll charge up to $200 for an event. Brookings is $50, Watertown's $300 for an event. Spearfish, they break it up with a kind of alcohol. So for beer or wine, it's 50, liquor, it's 100. So that's something where kind of, you know, I, I think we need to raise those prices a little bit more. The fees have not been updated since, I want to say, 1997, I believe. So I think it's a good time to review it. Right now, we also require the state's form. You know, if it's an already licensed holder of alcohol, we know they've already filled out this form before. I think it would, and a lot of the nonprofits, they get confused with it. So I think we could do a better job with making an easy one-page form that works for everybody. And then also, when they do apply, say, you know, either with a handout or with something, say, hey, thank you for getting a special event. Thank you for coming to Yankton. We're so happy to have you here, but you have to follow some rules. Here's the state law. Don't drink beer after 2:00 AM. You know, don't serve to minors. You got to be this old to serve beer. So I think that's one thing we can do a better job on our end, informing these special event holders, saying, you have this license, here's what you can and can't do with it.
Lisa, if, if we have an entity that falls within the state confines of someone who can acquire a license, a fraternal organization, you know, a service organization like American Legion or something like that, can they, is there any value in them continuing to get singular event license? Or could they just get one license and go ahead and do each event if they have their own license? If they're not selling, if they're just.
It really depends. So the special alcoholic beverage licenses, there is a really good state law, SDCL 354124, it's on our city website. There's a really good FAQ website from the state that says your license eligibility. So some of these nonprofits do not get the full-on year-round alcohol license because, you know, whether it be insurance or, you know, there might be a little bit of extra costs associated with it. So if they're not selling beer, there's certain rules with that, you know, that it depends on the place. You know, it depends on. There's a lot of different factors with that. You, you will see sometimes there's an event and people bring their own beer and consume it there. That is allowed. It's really when vendors such as these sell the beers where they need the license. But there is those five organizations that are eligible for a special alcoholic beverage license if they do not already have an alcohol license. And that's civic, charitable, educational, fraternal, veterans, and that's the five. So did I answer your question there?
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions at this time on special events?
Do you have a recommendation on what we should reset that special events event fee at?
We could, well, so that's one thing with the staff time. You know, I foresee if we make it an easier, easier, more efficient way to apply, it might save a lot of the questions. It might save a lot of the information side of things. So I would say $50 at the least, at the, you know, and that's probably a good discussion to, do you want to try to promote more events by keeping the costs low? Or do you want to try to get a little bit more revenue for the city? It's a balancing act that the commission may have to decide.
We were at 50, if we were at $50 an event instead of five, you think that would have cost us any of the events licenses that we sold last year?
No. Perhaps the one major entity, you know, the 26 out of 59 licenses, they may be more leaning it towards getting a malt beverage license, but I'm not sure where they stand right now. So. But I have heard from other special event licensees, they're like, they kind of chuckle when they hand us a $5 bill. They're like, oh, this is all and, you know, so they would, a few of them have mentioned they would support giving us more.
Okay, we recently had a committee that put together an application, kind of revamping some of the fees and the, the structure behind it.
Yes, and so this was more, this committee, the special events committee is still alive. We've kind of refocused with Todd's help to look at now spaces, the space of the lawn. And part of this conversation was born out of that. So the special events application is for partnering with the city or performing an event kind of on your own and fees associated with processing that application. So it's not a license per se, it's more of a, I would say, a service fee. So when I'm hosting, let's just say Rib Fest and I need trash cans and barricades and all these things that we provide, that's the, we're talking about fees for that, city time, staff time. And then they also will, will have to get a, if they're serving alcohol, they'd have to get this additional $5 fee with current. So we would tell them about that, but that's not a license. That's more of a fee for our services and our costs and our time. I think everyone, staff would be happy to look at that as well to make sure we're keeping up with costs there. But it was only recently that we started to charge it all for that. But this, this would be something in addition to that. So that is a consideration if, if the commission feels that, well, on top of that, most events have alcohol and it could get too expensive. But the reality of it is, is that, you know, our costs are high as well. And for $5, I mean, it doesn't even really cover the paperwork of processing. Say nothing about when we have a hiccup or somebody needs a special meeting. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. Or, or there's something unique about the event or the person, you know, we have a question with police. I mean, it's, it gets, cost gets added quickly. And we do, we are there, I mean, they're already paying, in many cases, paying for us to be there. I don't feel like we should nickel and dime, but by the same token, it's also confusing for people too. What, what, what are they supposed to be doing and how? So.
Yeah, and that's one thing with these licenses, they do require the same notice of hearing similar to other alcohol licenses. So, you know, we are paying $20 alone just to do a publication in the newspaper. So, I mean, I, it's one of those things where we're almost publishing their event in the newspaper for them. They get a good deal. So, and yeah, there's really not a lot of leeway about the two meeting requirement unless it's at a city, a publicly owned facility. So, you know, our general rule is we tell everybody two meetings no matter what because it's pretty, pretty rare for it to be on a publicly owned facility. So.
Did have a quick question. So on that special events license that we kind of went through and revamped, do we have, is there, is there a checkbox if we're serving alcohol? I just don't remember off the top of my head.
I believe there is, Todd. Is it correct that we talk about, are you doing alcohol? And you got to give a shorter answer than the tricky answer because we.
That, that is correct. Finance does have access to that web form and we are notified.
Are you doing alcohol or not?
Yeah, so going back to the philosophy part of it, when we started meeting, we talked about, you know, we had application fees of $50 and all it did was make people mad with us. So we, we talked through philosophy and the philosophy was we wanted the city to have events. So if we're not going to actually get money back, that's going to be real money, why are we charging a nominal amount to make people mad at us? So application fees went away. Where we came into, into play was looking at who are having the events? And is there alcohol present? So if there's alcohol, then that kicks us into different categories. And now it makes sense to have fees because we've got licensing and safety and security. If it's a group suicide prevention and they want to do a walk on the bridge, the little bit of time we put in processing that is simple. Road closures, barricades, security, completely different questions. So we did, we came down to the same thing. When you start to get alcohol involved, then that's a whole nother type of special event and we need to stay on top of that and do things. But most of the other fees, we do have the fees for dropping off equipment just because it, we get a lot of requests to bring tables, picnic tables, trash can, stuff like that. But we went away from most of the fees other than when we get into the alcohol and then, then we still have some available.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Where I was going with this, and not to get too far in the weeds with the special events license, but it just makes sense to me that if, if you're going to have that, fill that out that there's, and check that box, then immediately that would kick, then kick you into, just kind of to wrap it all into one thing. If you are going to have alcohol, then just to kind of streamline the process to make sure that they are applying for that immediately. And since you may have entities that are police, potentially fire if there's other things, but just those entities that are already together, if they have questions, you could almost take care of all that kind of at once type deal.
Yeah, yeah, alcohol definitely kicks it, but we are application online, even the simple ones. We still have all the department heads get an email that, hey, there's events going on, take a look at it just to be safe. Especially if we're talking road closures and fire.
Right.
No alcohol's involved, but there's going to be a road closure. Where are we closing the road? How are fire trucks going to have access? But no, especially when there's alcohol then. Yep, that sets off the bigger process for, especially for Lisa and her department.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
Yeah, it works out really well. So I, but you're right with us not having a, to use a state's form, that does give us a little bit more flexibility to make that, make that possible for sure. So going next, you know, we do have some outdated, as you can see, we have some ordinances that predate 1949. So, you know, I'd like to look at those. You know, we got to look at, do we want to update fees or just scratch and revoke the ordinance entirely? There are options. You know, Ross made a good question. What is the public purpose for a given license? What, what is the, you know, why do we have it? What, what are we trying to accomplish? You could kind of also see another sheet with your big Excel sheet of what other cities are doing. The highlighted ones out of 32 licenses, nine of them are highlighted. Nine are not even regulated by any of the other cities, which is Brookings, Watertown, Vermillion. So it's, it's one of those things where, you know, it brings up a good question. Also, it also considers where do other government departments play a part? So the Department of Revenue, I mentioned, last summer before Riverboat Days, we reached out to them. Department of Health, we've worked a lot with them on our street vendor of food licenses. So, you know, are we doubling up our duties? You know, what's, how can we help the state without really stepping on their toes? Ross, you may give a little bit more on, on that relationship. Ross, you may give a little bit more on, on that relationship. But it's one of those things where, you know, is it worth having this license if the Department of Revenue is going to oversee this? And then, again, just reviewing all of our ordinances, that's something I like to bring forward over the next year. There's some things that are really outdated. For example, junk dealer, you know, the 1940s, they wanted to know if you were married or single. 2024, we do not care if you're married or single. So I, certain things like that, I'd like to just review and see what we can do better.
Yeah, I put my light on because I just want to interject here. For the little bit of time we have left, I would be interested in the commission thinking a little bit about that question. What don't we need? Because most of the old stuff needs to be retooled to some extent. And I don't think we want to devote a lot of staff time and attention to something that a majority of this commission wants to completely do away with. So that perfunctory or kind of base level discussion, what don't we need is a nice place to start.
Maybe as you're looking through the licenses and you try to tell, tell yourselves, what are we doing this? What is the public purpose of this license? And if you don't, I think, report back to us on what you find there and that will give us the, the information we need to decide, is this worth continuing with? That's how I look at it.
We can do that.
And I, I think through our discussion tonight, we identified quite a few where it's like, why? So I think we have a good start.
Makes sense.
May I just ask Lisa, the commission, if they care, do you care about the dance license? You know, I think we can all say, oh, the mechanical riding device. Is there a public person, purpose for knowing that? Maybe there. Billiards, we're not, you know, it's not post-World War II. I think it's safe if people are playing pool. But, but what about the dan, I mean, I think the dance is kind of, to me, that's silly. But is there a public purpose?
Yeah, I'm on the same page. I, unless you've determined there is a reason that I, we're not thinking of, then I don't see a reason to continue with it.
I'm looking at the police chief, but he just...
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks for putting that together, Lisa. I think it was very informative to just be able to see what all we have on the books and time it's taking. I think it's going to really cause, not cause, require us to, I think, have some really good timely conversations. Because like you said, things change over time and, you know, just kind of the cost of doing business and how we do business and why, I think will be good conversations as we move forward. All right, in the essence of time, to give everybody just a few minutes here before we switch into the next meeting. I do not have anything under other business as far as the work session goes. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right. Hearing none of those, then we are adjourned and we will start the city commission meeting at seven, so everybody can have a quick break.